Graduate with me.
It's ready.
Good buddies.
So I'm gonna go to that.
I'd like to call the order of the regular Storm Lake City Council meeting of September fifteenth. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item then is any consideration to any changes on the agenda. And I just have one. I have item number four on the ordinance for the zoning map. Since we only have three council members this evening, I prefer to have a full council when we work on ordinances. So we will move that part, but we will have the public hearing this evening so we can hear, if there's anybody here to address the council, we will have that public hearing. But we'll just postpone any action on that until the next council meeting where we can have everyone here, so. Is that, if that's all right with council?
Yes.
Just something as important as an ordinance, I just feel we should have all members. Any other, council, you have any other suggestions or any changes to the agenda?
No.
No.
If not, then I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change. That item number four would be moved to the next meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson McKeon.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Rickliff's. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry. Agenda is set. Do we have any disclosures by any council members to any items on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to hear the public. Do we have anyone here who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please step up to the podium, identify yourself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Andrea Almanza and Laura Hanks with Storm Lake United. Just wanted to address the council and do a quick wrap-up on Wood, Wine &amp; Blues from 2025. Wanted to thank especially Dana and Brandon for helping with the planning and preparation for the event. They were extremely helpful. I know Lee and Dana accompanied us back in February, I think. We went and walked the park and talked about how things were set up for Wood, Wine &amp; Blues in previous years. And they were with us along the way. And then Brandon and his crew were phenomenal to work with, so we greatly appreciate that. The committee, Andrea, Councilperson McKeon, Natalie Schuman, and Kelsey Schmitz, were very instrumental in putting together all of the plans for Wood, Wine &amp; Blues. It was extremely helpful to have a committee put together that worked on that, set all our brains around the table and worked out all the plans, which worked out well. Happy to report the Beer Garden was a successful addition to the festivities, was well-attended and well-mannered and everything worked out well, so we were happy about that. Like I said, thank you to Brandon and the entire crew at the city for all the extra help in setting up and prepping for the event. It was a pleasure to work with all of them. They, when we called them, they had answers to our questions. They were extremely helpful in whatever we needed and it was so appreciated because we would not have been able to do it without their help. Thanks to all the sponsors that supported, both in-kind and financial sponsors in the business community, as well as the City of Storm Lake and Kings Point for providing the lodging for our carvers and some of our entertainment venues, so we appreciate that as well from Kings Point. The committee met for a recap meeting and decided it was an overall success and plan on improvements and changes for 2026. Is there any questions about Wood, Wine &amp; Blues?
I don't have quite, I have a statement that the times I was there, it looked like it was phenomenal. I, kudos to you guys and all the work you put in. I think it was a, in my mind, my views of it, it was a success and it was a great event for the community, brought a lot of people. And just a great event, I'm glad.
Andrea took care of details, 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 so.
Congratulations Andrea, you did a nice job.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to address the council here at this public, on here the public?
Julie Steinfeld from Witter Galleries, hello everybody. First of all, thank you to those who attended the dedication of the new mural that we had downtown. I really appreciate all of your, you know, support that you give us throughout the year. I'm here tonight to ask if we could have the fee waived at the Sunrise Point Municipal Golf Clubhouse. We're having a fundraiser on November eighth for Witter Gallery and we're a nonprofit, so I was told that I could ask the council if we could waive that fee. We're gonna have a, it's called a super chillin' volicious cook-off. So we're gonna have a chili cook-off for our fundraiser this year. So it'll start at five o'clock out at the Sunrise Point Municipal Golf Course and at the clubhouse. What else would you like to know?
I like that you're doing another fundraiser. Last year's was a good start, so this will be a little different, yeah.
Yeah, this is way different than what we've done in the past, so we're looking forward to it. We have local cooks coming and it's gonna be a chili contest and there's prizes and.
The only thing I think we, in the past, have we had it in writing usually?
We have, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We need, we need that, we can't pass anything out of here the public.
Oh, okay.
We need your request in writing.
Okay.
And then we'll put it on the agenda and then we'll bring it forward.
Okay, I thought I was gonna be on the agenda tonight, but when I checked, I didn't see it and I was told that. Okay, so you want me to come back then?
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
You don't necessarily have to.
We'll take your spiel right now.
Yeah.
That is, that's efficient.
That was your spiel.
We just need to do the paperwork for it to get it.
Protocol, not my strong suit.
No, Honorable Mayor and Council, if I could just get the email from you, just send it to me.
Yeah, you have that email, right?
No, I did not get anything via email.
Okay. All right, I'll send one to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then we'll make it official and we'll get it on there for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work. The murals are incredible.
I mean, you, I mean, it's just, it's just great. I mean, between Wood, Wine &amp; Blues and the murals, we have a lot going on in our communities, so.
Artistic things, yeah.
Thank you for all these different organizations that are doing things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Having a real good thing with here the public here. Anyone else? Do we have anyone online who would like to address the council at here the public? It's star six to unmute. Not, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda, council? Hearing none, then I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Second by Councilperson McKeon. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry. Next item is unfinished business of a motion to acknowledge mid-year report 2025. Mr. Larson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. This again is our mid-year report. We've made a few edits as the council has suggested. And this report again details the projects and all the improvements that have been achieved by each of our departments. There are folks in the back row here and all the people that work with them during the first half of the year. Council wishes to acknowledge the report this evening. We'll make it available to the public through all our usual channels, which includes the city website, which is www.stormlake.org, our Facebook page, City of Storm Lake. We'll have a hard copy of City Hall. We'll share with local media and we'll also do text alerts for the folks that are signed up for that.
Have any questions?
No, I want to thank you for going back and making the changes. It reads much more smoothly.
Well, glad it's improved.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know it was a lot of hard work on everybody's part, especially you, asking you to edit it. But I think it looks great. I think when I look at it, I get really excited. There's a lot going on in the city, a lot to be proud of. And congratulations to every department for everything that they've achieved that's listed in here.
I think once we get it approved, I think through your Facebook and stuff, I think we should push out some of the things that different departments are doing or have done. I think a lot of that goes unrecognized by our public and they do, just by looking through this, they do an awful lot that people do not recognize. And I think, I think we should push that out on Facebook so that our community and the public can see what actually gets done by. Because it is, it is impressive what actually.
And we've had an incredible year.
Yeah.
I mean, we really have.
We had the storms and everything else.
It's been impressive.
They still were able to do some pretty incredible things, so.
Do you have any other questions or comments for Mr. Larson?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, then I entertain a motion to acknowledge the mid-year report of 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Rickliff's. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry. So that will then be available on our website and for the public to read. Next item then is a motion to approve a five-day church event request at the Great Lawn. Chief Cole.
Our office received a request for a noise variance for outdoor service to be held at the Great Lawn from October second through the seventh with amplified music, electric pianos and speakers from the hours of 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM each night. And I'm told the speakers are producing between 95 and 110 decibels. And they also were asking for about a, putting a tent up, a 40 by 80 tent for the event. And I believe they have a representative here if you have questions.
It's actually not a musical event so much. It's more ministering to the word and praying for people. It's, music is going to be more like what you would experience in a church service. So just, just as I am, you know, just regular singing. And then we share the word with people and pray for people for physically, emotional and just for healing and whatever else is going on in their lives. It's the ministry of the word. And so I've been part of numerous events like this, just reaching out to people in hearts, homes that are broken, children that are hurting and just, that's generally. So it's not so much of a jamboree as there is ministry and praying, praying and ministry to people, so.
Is it like multi-denominational or is it specific?
Yes, it's open to all denominations completely. Yeah, so there's multiple people. And we had a request from local people to put this together. So I was asked to be involved and I'm actually kind of overseeing it because I've done numerous events and the people here deserve it. That are involved have not had so much, haven't done it as often. So they asked me to kind of be involved in it. And if there's questions, I can be contacted about it or if there's any concerns.
Did, I missed it. In your name, sir?
It's Edwin Waldner. I am from South Dakota, in the Sioux Falls area, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
We won't hold that against you.
I grew up in the middle of a cornfield in the Hurrah community. And just about 30 years ago, it's our ministry of people in hearts and I've seen so many lives changed. And it's our hearts to do that. There's many people that are hurting in life and just to see a touch of the Father's love.
Any council members have any questions for?
I just have a question for Chief Cole. You know, is there any, so this is a large event. It's a unique event. And is there any concern about security? Public gatherings now, I think we always have to ask that question.
We haven't received any, any threats or anything like that at this point. I mean, we always, anytime there's public events, we have officers on patrol. But we haven't been asked for specific security for this.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I had to ask that question. Sign of the times.
It seems to be needed in this day and hour.
Any other questions?
And it's the October second through the seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
And it should, post start about 6:30 and they usually wrap up at 8:30 to 9:30. It's about an hour and a half to two, two and a half hours.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve a five-day church event request at the Great Lawn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Rickliff's.
Second.
Second by Councilperson McKeon. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a three-hour drive, so.
Safe travels.
Blessings.
Next item then is a motion to approve the Storm Lake United request for Sassy Saturday events. Chief Cole.
What you have in front of you is a request for, from SLU on a noise variance for outdoor amplified music and food truck generators for Sassy Saturday, scheduled for October fourth, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There is a brief description below and there's representatives from Storm Lake United to answer any questions you may have.
Hello, Andrea Almanza, Storm Lake United for Sassy Saturday. So this is an event that takes place every year. We team up with BV MRC and we want to ask for a noise variance because we plan on having like a food truck hub by using parking lot B, which is right across the Storm Lake United office. We did file the paperwork with the city already. Like Officer Cole said, we're just looking for the noise variance in case we have music or loud generators. Any questions?
Good.
Any questions for? Is it the, for the entire parking lot or just a portion?
Yep, parking lot B, yep.
Okay, parking lot B.
No snow that day, please. Could be a problem.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing any more, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Storm Lake United request for Sassy Saturday events.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson McKeon.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Martinez. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry.
Thank you.
Okay, next item then is a public hearing for application 2025-1. It's a request for a zoning map amendment change in the IN3 Hospital Medical Facility zoning district to allow for a change to community commercial. I will open that public hearing. Mr. Olson.
Yeah, Mayor and Council. So what we have here is again a request for rezoning of a parcel that's currently IN3, which is a hospital medical facility zoning district and change it to CC community commercial. The applicant was Mike Copeland doing businesses turnaround properties, Storm Lake LLC. And this is a gymnastics center that's adjacent to the fitness center that the Vina Visser Regional Medical Center owns on West Milwaukee. One time the two properties were connected. It was, it was one parcel, wasn't, wasn't two separate parcels as it occurs now. So they ended up splitting that off, creating a lot and selling it off for somebody else to use. It's always been used as a gymnastics center, just had a couple of different owners. The current owner, Mr. Copeland, is looking to rezone it because he's moved his gymnastics center operation over to Lamar's, if I remember correctly. Anyway, trying to sell it when it's in that such a specific zoning district makes it difficult. So his thought is if I can have this community commercial, it might make it easier to try and put this on the market and sell it. He has no intent of utilizing for what it, for what it currently is. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this last week. They recommended unanimously to approve the application. We did go through criteria, discussed it at the meeting for what this is. So that in the zoning orders, chapter 12 gives you the administrative properties or procedures for reviewing it. And so I'll briefly kind of go through these. If you guys have specific questions, just stop me and then we'll kind of go over those. Final criteria was used is the Planning and Zoning Commission shall determine the following. One, whether or not the current classification of property we are zoning is valid. Mr. Copeland stated that he feels the current zoning is no longer valid due to the fact the hospital no longer owns a property. The future land use map and the conference plan also indicates that Mr. Copeland's lot as potentially being highway, commercial, or industrial zoning. Second would be whether or not there's an additional need for land zone for the purpose requested. According to table 2-1 of the Conference of Plan, commercial property is currently 8.7% of the total land area of the city, so it's not a great number percentage-wise of what we currently have. Third item would be whether or not the proposed change is consistent with the current land use plan, considering such factors as whether the rezoning would result in population density development, which in turn causes demand for services or utilities in excess of the capacity planned for the area. Current sewer water that's in that area would be acceptable. We've got an eight-inch water main going past there and the sewer main is acceptable as well, so it wouldn't be overly impacting that. Next item would be whether or not the rezoning would result in generating traffic in excess of the capacity existing in planned streets in the vicinity. West Milwaukee is one of our principal arteries. That's our heaviest use, multiple lanes. So whatever potential uses in the CC district would not overburden that, that area. Other items considered are the size of the area to be rezoned. In this case, the future land use map does show the property's potential commercial use and it is adjacent to an existing CC commercial, or zone in the district across the road. So we're just basically extending up and around. This is a smaller parcel, but due to the fact that the land use map shows us as being a different zoning district, it kind of makes up for that. Not to mention the fact that previously owned by the hospital, they specifically sold this piece off, so they have no intent of developing in this manner, so. The surrounding, use of the surrounding area. The other use in the area are kind of a mixture of commercial and institutional. There is a dwelling next door to Mr. Copeland's property, but that's been there for a while. But the overwhelming use, at least on the north side of Milwaukee, is commercial, institutional, industrial. The use, let's see, excuse me, the change in conditions of the area. Again, the property in question was split off and sold by the hospital and is sold suitable for commercial use. The existing use that's there would be permitted whether it's in the IN3 or the CC, so that way it's not a conforming use that would be if somebody would purchase it for a gymnastics center. The track suitability and adaptability of various uses. The current IN3 zoning classification does provide some limitations for development for commercial uses. Rezoning would make it more flexible to utilize a property for a wider array of uses in this area. Again, the IN3 is really supposed to be for medical-type facilities, not general's commercial. Whether there's intent on the part of the applicant to develop the property to be rezoned diligently within a reasonable time. Mr. Copeland's actively trying to sell the property and obviously it's already been developed, so that really doesn't play into this. And again, the Storm Lake Conference Plan also shows this as a future land use map as being a highway, commercial, industrial use. Page 59, goal 1, also says support and expand city's economic base. So work with existing businesses to maintain or expand their current sites or relocate to more appropriate sites. In this case, allowing some flexibility in how this thing is used. That's kind of the goal there. Goal two would be provide adequate land and infrastructure to make locations within the city attractive for future businesses. Again, make it as more flexible, allow for more different types of uses than the more restrictive IN3. Since this is a change in the official zoning map, it will require three readings. So we'll have our public hearing and we'll move the first ring to the next council meeting. There's three votes required since we're changing the official land use map. Again, the P&amp;Z reviewed this and recommended approval to the council.
Do you have anyone else here who would like to speak at this public hearing? Please identify yourself and.
I am Samantha Rasmussen. I'm actually part-owner as well of the property. You mentioned Mike Copeland, who is my partner. But I thank you for listening tonight. I am here on behalf of the 1309 West Milwaukee Building. I was gonna give you a little background how we ended up here. It's not how we wanted it to end, but about 11 years ago, we were contacted by BV MRC who owned the facility at the time. They had a team gymnastics coach quit in the middle of the season, so it was December. And they said, hey, we, we kind of researched, we heard you guys were really great. Would you want to come and coach? And Mike and I said, I don't really want to go coach, but would you be interested in selling? And they said, yeah, because, you know, here is a hospital trying to run a gymnastics facility. It's like me trying to run a hospital. My parents started our facility in Lamar's, our dance and gymnastics facility, 48 years ago, still up and running there. So we thought, what a great chance to expand our business. We're an hour away. We do reside in Lamar's. Our hope had been to build staff, to build our, being able to be away from the building and keep it operational. I mean, I've had your daughters, right? How are they doing?
They're good.
Good, great. And unfortunately, my mother was a big staple for our son. Mike and I are domestic partners as well. And she died suddenly two years ago and she was a mainstay for watching our son at night. So four nights a week of us being gone, we felt was not a great decision for our son, so we had to make some changes. We did try to sell it within the facility of our families, hoping somebody might want to buy it as a dance and gymnastics facility. We wanted it to carry on that way. Fortunately, we never got anybody. We had a coach that was interested. It took her about a year to decide and then it wasn't a fit for her. So that left us selling the building as it is. We put it out to the market, found out we had somebody interested right away. It was an electrical company out of Emmonsburg. And they were, already loved it and then they found out it was not zoned for what they needed. And that was the first time we heard about it. So it's a great building, it's a great location, love to have it be used. You know, empty, empty property is not great curb appeal, as we all know. And I'd love it to be employment for your town, your taxes. All of those things are just so much more profitable for you guys and to have a business in there. So we're hoping that you will consider the rezoning for that. I did meet two gentlemen last of the other zoning, Alex, Alejandro and Eric, and I talked with them after. They were very interested in a community center, which they said is kind of something that's needed in the area. And I told them to come tonight, but I don't see them. But anyway, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight.
Thank you very much for coming over, appreciate it. Council, do you have any, anything to add at the public hearing?
Nobody else had, nobody called or wrote or?
I was just gonna, has we had anybody contact us?
We have not received.
Do we have anybody online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
We did have one person at the P&amp;Z hearing that was against it, so he recommended that we deny it. But, so I haven't gotten it in writing though, so that should be in the minutes. So we'll make sure that if you don't have it, you do. We'll attach it and just make sure that's there so you get their take on that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, any other comments, council? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Like I said, we'll move the, the actual official business on that to the next council meeting when we have, hopefully have a council. Okay, next item then is a resolution number 10-R-2025-2026, approving a change order number four for the new production well number 22 project. Mr. Olson.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is on well 22. This is the new well we're drilling straight north of the water plant, kind of across the road from the new elementary school. And what this is, is for, this well 22 is replacing former well 15. So the old wells there, so we've got two casings that don't have grout between them. So the outer and inner casing, we want to get that grouted, so we cap it off. You make sure that the wellhead's completely sealed off and that way you don't have to worry about any type of sinkholes occurring later and that sort of thing. So it's just basically a thing to kind of finish off the process of capping off the old well. So the total cost on this is $5,807.50. So the new contract price total would be $2,429,861.53.
Do you have any questions, council?
Did the fact that there wasn't grout there come as a surprise?
Potentially. We got Mr. Graf with ISG, he could maybe speak to that if you get a chance.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the, to maybe draw a little bit clearer picture. When that well was originally drilled, our assumption is there were some unstable soils there. And so in order to keep the well from collapsing, they put in a, kind of an outer casing. And then once they've got that material or that hole cased, then they basically go through and they. through and they re-drill to a deeper depth, and that prevents the soil from caving in on the drill bit. When they do that, they typically grout that annular space between the two casings to protect the aquifer below, and they did that to some degree back when the well was drilled a couple decades ago. However, when we were getting ready to close the well, the contractor televised that and reported that the space had not been fully grouted, and so essentially, if we close that well, and we don't fill that space over time, as Mr. Olson alluded, that will eventually just kind of settle and create a bit of a sinkhole. So, in order to properly seal that, prevent the sinkhole, and protect the aquifer, we're recommending that we have the contractor go ahead and grout that before they close that well.
I understand. Thank you. I'm always disappointed when we get these requests for change orders that cost more money, and so I'm always going to ask why it wasn't predicted ahead of time, so, but I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. Are there any additional questions regarding Resolution Number 11-R-2025-2026, approving change order number four and final acceptance for the new production well 21 project? No questions?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. This is a resolution, so we do need a vote. Counselperson Martinez?
Aye.
Counselperson Rickliff?
Aye.
And Councilmember McKean?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Resolution 10. Whoops. Resolution 10.
Resolution 10.
10, sorry. Resolution 10, sorry. It was Resolution 10. Okay. Now, we're off to Resolution 11, approving a change order for the new production well 21 project. Building and Co. Compliance Director Olson.
Okay, this is the well we did over in Frank Star Park. So, this is, this resolution has two parts. One is a change order in the cost, and this one's a reduction of $85,038, creating a new final of $1,498,940.50. And the reason for the reduction was they made some changes on the exterior. They were planning on having to do quite a bit of landscape block, and we changed that up so that what's not required made it easier to mow with all that stuff out of there, and some other items they didn't have to do so. Since they didn't have to provide those services, they did that as a deduct. The second part of this would be the final acceptance of the project. The engineering firm, ISG, reviewed the project as is and recommended we permit final approval and final payment on this project.
Change orders that give us back money always make me happy.
Me too.
We won't even ask for explanation.
You can always use those, but yeah, this one, like I said, on occasion, conditions are suitable such that they can remove things. In this case, like I said, the grading changed quite a little, so we made it so we didn't have to put in that wall, and that takes a lot of money and time, so, and then it kind of had a cascading effect of other items that weren't required with a steel fence and that type of thing, so it's made it a lot simpler, so lucky on this one.
Apologies. Go ahead. So, we're on item number six.
Yes.
Any questions or comments, counsel? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 11-R-2025-2026, approving change order number four and final acceptance for the new production well number 21 project.
So, moved.
Moved by Counselperson McKean.
Second.
Second by Counselperson Rickliff. This will be a roll call vote, so Counselperson Martinez?
Aye.
Counselperson Rickliff?
Aye.
And Counselperson McKean?
Aye.
That will carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and Counsel, I think when you left, I flubbed up. We need a motion in a second. Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, we'll go back to item number five.
That's why we don't, that's why I don't run the meeting, that we have a great mayor that does that.
Sorry about that. Things don't, are our hopes. Okay, with that, we had all the discussion we wanted on item number...
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 10-R-2025-2026, approving change order number four for the new production well number 22 project.
So, moved.
Moved by Counselperson Martinez?
Second.
Second by Counselperson Rickliff. Also a roll call vote, so Counselperson Rickliff?
Aye.
Counselperson McKean?
Aye.
And Counselperson Martinez?
Aye.
That will carry. So, now we're down to the board, board appointments. Next item then is a motion to appoint board and commissioner members. Ms. Martinez?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, these is the board approvals for appointments for planning and zoning, civil service, and Board of Adjustment, with their appropriate terms to expire.
Counselperson McKee just can't quite get completely away. I was just going to say...
It didn't stick.
So, just for public, we have Erin Ramos for the planning and zoning, Coloy Nimly, is that?
Cola.
Cola?
Mm-hmm.
Nimly for the civil service, and Kevin McKee to the Board of Adjustment. And I just appreciate their service on these committees. We appreciate anybody being active in our communities, so. Any questions or comments, counsel? With that then, I'd entertain a motion to appoint those board and commission members.
So, moved.
Moved by Counselperson Martinez?
Second.
Second by Counselperson McKean. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next item is Resolution Number 12-R-2025-2026, calling a special city election. Ms. Martinez?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, with Kevin McKee's resignation, I created a vacancy. We confirmed with the Secretary of State that we are to make an official motion for calling for a special meeting. The special meeting will be in a separate day. It'll be the same day as the regular city school election, and it'll just be named special election.
So, just clarification, you're using the term meeting. You're talking about a special election, correct?
Special election.
Thank you.
So, it'll be the same as the regular school board meeting and our regular city election also?
Yes.
Like you say, it needs to...
I know.
School board election and our regular city election, and we'll also have a special election that same day.
Yes. Very good.
Lot going on that day, so just well in advance, and appreciate everybody to go out and vote that day, and I also appreciate...
What a great idea.
I also appreciate people getting any papers in that would like to run for those positions you have until...
Thursday.
Thursday, I believe, correct?
Yes.
To get papers in, so appreciate anybody considering that.
Very much.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? With that then, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 12-R-2025-2026, calling for a special city election, and that will be then on the same date as the school board election and our regular city council election.
November 4.
November 4.
So, moved.
Moved by Counselperson Martinez?
Second.
Second by Counselperson Rickliff. This will also be a roll call vote, so Counselperson McKean?
Aye.
Counselperson Martinez?
Aye.
And Counselperson Rickliff?
Aye.
Next item then is Resolution Number 13-R-2025-2026, adopting changes to the City of Storm Lake employee handbook. Ms. Martinez, stealing the show here.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, this is the resolution to adopt the changes that were reviewed at our work session at the last council meeting. It just attaches the clean versions of the changes in the resolution. It exhibits, and it talks about longevity, overtime, common time, holiday pay, and vacation pay, with the designated effective dates on them.
Have any questions for Ms. Martinez? Hearing done, then I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 13-R-2025-2026, adopting changes to the City of Storm Lake employee handbook.
So, moved.
Moved by Counselperson Rickliff?
Second.
Second by Counselperson Martinez. Also a roll call vote, so Counselperson Martinez?
Aye.
Counselperson Rickliff?
Aye.
And Counselperson McKean?
Aye.
Next item is Resolution Number 14-R-2025-2026, to reject the bids for the wastewater treatment plant blower replacement project. Mr. Deragon?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, this item will consider the bids for the wastewater treatment plant blower replacement project. As we've discussed in the past, we received a $300,000 energy efficiency and conservation block grant from IEDA to replace the existing aeration blowers with new, more efficient blowers and controls. Our engineer's estimate on this project was $700,000, so that's the $300,000 plus $400,000 of city funds. We received six bids on this project, with low bid being $1,177,000, and the highest bid being $1,889,000. As we mentioned, the engineer's estimate for the project was $700,000, so we have a $477,000 deficiency. If you would like more details on the engineer's bid, Tom Graff is here with ISG, and if not, I'll just continue on.
I think it'd be nice to know what...
Yes.
Why the difference, yeah.
I'll call Tom up, and I'll step aside and get out of his way. Mr. Deragon?
Good evening again. So, as we evaluated the bids for the project, a number of different factors. We started that project a couple of years prior to the bid date, and so the estimate was probably a little bit dated. Number two, it seemed as though the electrical bids that we received for the project, the subcontractors who bid on the electrical portion of that, from what we could gather, those numbers were considerably higher than what we expected. We had our engineering group go through and evaluate that. I think to some degree, it's a matter of contractors being somewhat busy. And then thirdly, this project was required to have Build America by America requirements, which requires contractors to source all of their products from U.S. sources, and so that obviously had a fairly significant impact as well, particularly as we start looking at the piping, valves, et cetera. So, fortunately, costs just came in considerably more than what we anticipated.
Did we know about the Buy America when we made the bid, when we got the estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, the estimated cost was maybe lower than perhaps we should have had. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if we take an option to postpone that, prices are also going to continue to rise. So, that concerns me. My other question then is, what happens to the grant money that we received? Are we still going to have that available, or is that just going to go to some other use and we go to the bond, as one of the options suggests?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, the grant would be given back to the state.
So, we're going to have to return the grant money and then postpone replacing equipment that we deemed needs to be replaced, and go for potentially, since we haven't voted on the options yet, a bond, and how much more is that going to cost us overall?
Unfortunately, I don't think anybody can answer that.
That question can just, that's fine. It just, it concerns me that, you know, what happens if the blowers don't make it to when we get to the bond? Are they substantial enough to make it till we get to that point?
I think the blowers in their current condition are being maintained well by the staff out there. Their biggest issue is that they're just grossly oversized for what we need, so obviously, from an energy efficiency savings, there's, wasted energy is one of the biggest issues. At some point, those blowers will need to be replaced. They are fairly old, old models compared to what some of the newer designs are and what the newer technology is, and as we look forward into the future to the nutrient reduction strategy and what that project will entail, again, I think those blowers will need to be addressed at some point.
Yeah, I agree. My concern is that they might need to be replaced before we get to the point of being able to do a bond, if that's our option.
Are parts still available for those blowers if something would...
I think as of right now, they're still able to maintain things, and we do have redundancy. Currently, there are three blowers that are functional, and they're using one on a regular basis, so we do have some redundancy and backup in the event that one of them does need to be taken out of service for repair, so there's a little bit of an insurance out there, but again, as those blowers continue to age, parts, finding suitable parts does become a challenge.
I mean, that would help with being able to maintain their useful life for a little while...
Right.
Anyway, without having a total disaster of one of them let down.
Thank you.
Have any other questions for Mr. Graff at this point? Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Deragon.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, as I see it and recommend to you, we have three options to consider. Excuse me. Option one is to reject all bids received, as additional funding's not available to cover a $477,000 shortfall. Option two, we could accept the low bid, make adjustments to our current capital improvement program by spending the additional $477,000 in fiscal year '26. To do that, we would have to move out projects from fiscal year '27, probably into '28 or '29, and hope that we recover the funds to restore our fund balance. Doing this, I think our option would lead to a fund balance below council's preferred guidelines of 40%, and I would probably estimate it to be somewhere below 20, most likely 18%, which would leave us not much money in case of a disaster or any, any project that needed to be done in an emergency basis. Option three, we can reject the bids and plan for a project in a few years that would complete the blower project upgrades and other enhancements that would be favorable to the nutrient reduction program's desired outcomes. This bond would be issued following payoff of current bonds in the sewer fund, and that is over the next three to five years. We would probably at that point be able to free up enough funding roughly in the area of about $290,000 to $432,000 annually in order to cover a bonded project. At this time, I can't tell you what that bonded project would look like, nor what the payment would look like, nor what the interest rate would look like.
Nor what the new cost would be.
No.
Is, is the bonded project in the foreseeable future, is that a project that we're going to be looking at doing anyway, just without the blower? I mean, if we didn't have to worry about the blowers, would we still be looking at a project like that?
You would probably look at bonded funding to do projects when you have the capacity to do that, I believe.
For the nutrient reduction.
But that's certainly council's option.
So, this would just, this would be added to a bonded project that we quite possibly would be needing to do anyway?
So, realistically, while it's certainly council's option of which one you want to pick, in good conscience, I can only suggest rejecting the bids, and we plan accordingly in the future. But it's council's pleasure, and we'll move forward as directed.
Any further comments or questions, counsel? Have we worked with the lowest bid in the past?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, I have not had the experience with a low-bid contractor.
I do know they were the contractors for the recycling center back in, back in recent, they did that, they're back in the paint.
Any other questions? Which direction?
I don't like having to send three hundred thousand dollars back.
I know.
It's disappointing. I'm sure it's disappointing to everyone, but you don't have the money, you don't have, I mean.
Yeah, it's unfortunate we got that far into it, you know, and to find out how much more it's going to cost. But, yeah, I agree. I don't think there's really any option. We don't have the money right now.
I would, Honorable Mayor and Council, I would add that we looked at our current ongoing budget for maintenance items, our other, we've got lift station projects going on, and we're so far into what we can do, there's nothing we can really cut out to try to free up any money. We looked at that option as well, and then looking at what we could do from a capital improvement program, and that doesn't come without risk.
Right, you're just pushing projects back that already need to be done.
Yes. How to bring a meeting to a grinding hall.
Well, I mean, I'm disappointed in the difference between the estimated cost and the bids, but I don't think we can move things around. I've already expressed my concern that hopefully the blowers will continue until we can get a bond, so I'm in favor of option three.
Then we'll just, I think we can choose which option we want later.
Yeah.
This is just, here would be just whether or not we want to reject the bids.
Reject the bids.
Reject the bids, okay.
Future, we can decide which direction we want to go.
Probably have that discussion with our capital improvement planning time.
Coming up soon. Not too far down the line.
Like next month.
That's real funny, isn't it?
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
With that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Numbers fourteen dash R dash twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, which will reject the bids for the wastewater treatment plant blower replacement project.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Rickliff.
Second.
Second in time, second, Councilperson McKeon. This will be a roll call vote, so. Councilperson Rickliff?
Aye.
Councilperson McKeon?
Aye.
Councilperson Martinez?
Aye.
That will carry.
Thank you.
Next item is Resolution Number fifteen dash R dash twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, adopting electronic certified payroll records policy. Ms. Navratil.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Well, I'm excited to share that housing and urban development and the Iowa Economic Development Authority said that we can start accepting certified digital signatures on payroll reports. However, this would only be for projects funded by CDBG funds and that are funded by the federal government that require Davis Bacon wages. Ensuring compliance with this policy will be the responsibility of the grant administrator, and they will review and ensure that there is compliance with all Davis Bacon regulations.
Questions or comments for Ms. Navratil? Hearing none then, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number fifteen dash R dash twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, adopting the electronic certified payroll records policy.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson McKeon and seconded by Councilperson Rickliff. Roll call vote also, so Councilperson McKeon?
Aye.
Councilperson Martinez?
Is the number correct? It looks like there's extra numbers, maybe I'm looking at something. Are we voting on fifteen R, what, what is the rest of the number that we're voting on?
Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Yeah, there's a three in there.
There's a three in there.
Two, three.
Two, three.
Twenty five.
Just so at least I see it on the left-hand side.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't know if that matters.
It's not at the top of the document, it's just in the.
It's just in the summary on the left-hand side.
The attachment is mislabeled on the, on our content.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing. Aye.
Councilperson Rickliff?
Aye.
Councilperson McKeon?
Aye.
That will carry.
Thank you.
Next item is Resolution Number sixteen dash R dash twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, terminating the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Plan for the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Area and ending the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Area. Mr. Duffield, please explain that to me.
Well, simply put, this is a little bit of housekeeping, so it's not really as daunting as it appears. Just a little history on this, Honorable Mayor and Council. Back in July twenty first of two thousand fourteen, the city of Storm Lake adopted the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Plan. With that urban renewal plan, they established an urban renewal area, and then within that urban renewal area, you have projects within that. There were a couple amendments in two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand eighteen, removing land, two of those, and then the original projects in that urban renewal area were for public improvements for a twenty-four lot residential subdivision, streets, infrastructure, and a water detention pond, walking trails in a park. Those were the projects. The city never implemented a property tax revenues under the Iowa code for that area, and accordingly, there was no TIF taxing district or fund associated with that area. An ordinance was not adopted, so nothing really happened within that urban renewal area. The projects were not funded by the creation of a TIF district, so that's the bottom line. There are no ongoing urban renewal projects being undertaken and under that plan and under that urban renewal area, as I stated. So accordingly, the city has determined that it's in the best interest of the city to terminate the plan and then the urban renewal area. It's the recommendation to approve the resolution terminating the urban renewal plan, urban renewal area, and ending the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Area.
Any questions?
It's a lot of area. Where is this area exactly, geographically?
The third edition is, what street would that be?
Honorable Mayor, it's, yeah, over by Oneida, but it's Magnolia. It's the property that the city owned for housing development.
It's called houses there.
Built what, twenty-four houses?
Twenty-four homes.
That are still there.
And I think we, in addition to what we did this for, if I remember right, we were thinking about tiffing that area and using the taxes from the TIF to pay for the infrastructure, but we never, never actually did that.
And as we're looking at TIF going forward, we're like trying, you know, cleaning things up, and there's no purpose to this, so.
It's part of the reason TIF is so complicated, that you have to have all these things.
Yeah, so you put all these in place and then nothing, I mean, but you still have them there.
You put all those things in place and then we didn't use any TIF out of that area. But we got twenty-four homes out of it.
That's right.
Which is nice.
Yeah, there was progress. It just wasn't done through that process.
Any other questions for Mr. Duffield? Hearing none then, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number sixteen dash R dash twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, terminating the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Plan for the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Area and ending the Storm Lake Third Edition Urban Renewal Area.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Rickliff.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Martinez. And I don't know where I'm at with my resolutions, so this is a resolution again, so Councilperson Martinez?
Aye.
Councilperson Rickliff?
Aye.
Councilperson McKeon?
Aye.
That will carry. Next item is a work session. Back to our work session on the Storm Lake Zoning Code, Article ten, sign regulations. Mr. Duffield?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I thought I heard a groan from the back there about we're doing this again, but.
And from the front.
And the front, I know, I know. It's, this has been my, you know, my elephant, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time, right? So I've been going through this. It's proven to be pretty complicated, but I do appreciate the feedback the council gave me during the last work session, and so I wasn't sure we were going to get to this today, so I'm going to make this very brief because there's still a few things that we're working on, but I wanted to kind of give you an update, and there is one question I wanted you to think about. So, really quickly, I found out the name of those signs that, if you look on the back of Sugar Bowl, it says J.C. Penney's. It's an old sign. Those are called ghost signs. I didn't know. So we're going to include those in, that's historic. It's described as a faded, hand-painted advertisement, often seen on historic buildings from the eighteen eighties to the nineteen sixties, and is kept for nostalgic appeal or historical significance. That's one of the main ones. I'm sure there's others in town, and who knows, when we pull something off, you might find something. We don't want to count that as a sign or against somebody. Historic signage, we talked about what is historic signage, looking at other communities, existing signs of historic significance, such as plaques, painted words, ghost signs, advertisements, or other significant signs on buildings that were constructed prior to nineteen sixty. So those are your historic definition of, because we talked about preserving historic signs. Moving sign, as I'm going through this, like I'm finding out things like I was completely wrong. So our definition of a moving sign isn't the moving lights, it's actually like the old KFC bucket, actual physically moving sign. Scott Olson helped me on that, and so that's what that is, is a moving sign. We've updated that. We don't have any.
Yes, the bucket moved. It went around in circles. Lovely.
I actually remember that very well as a kid. That and the Unicold. Anyway, I put in there something about multiple tenants, because that was one of the issues. You know, if there's other people, more than one, they should each get their own opportunity to have signage, and that shouldn't, somebody's signage budget shouldn't cut into somebody else's. That's put in there new. Okay, so this, the special event sign, this is where I had my question. So we talked about special events and temporary signs, and so there was a little bit of confusion. Temporary, so a temporary banner is like one of those signs that you put on there, it's in place of a sign that you're actually going to get eventually, so it's just a temporary sign until you get your permanent sign, never meant to be permanent, thirty days only, as you guys said, unless you request for an additional thirty. The other signs are like the feather signs, the bag air-activated signs, billboard, human billboards, and portable signs. How long do we allow, how many times are they allowed to have a special event sign? Because there's some in town that have those quite often, so, and you don't want to be against business if they're having promotions and sales. So, you know, is that something that we limit? Now, those are not going to be allowed in downtown, in the central business district. The following signs are going to be prohibited based on what council told me, which is air-activated signs, feather signs, flashing signs, moving signs, and projected image signs. But the question becomes those that are outside of the central business district, do we allow them to have, you know, six times per year, or once a month for seven days? How do you, so that's, you don't have to answer that now, but kind of keep that in mind.
I think we probably want to try to get it so somebody isn't using that for an event all the time, so that it almost makes it a permanent sign.
Right. So in doing your research for similar policies or ordinances, what have you come up with? Is there a standard that others have used?
I've seen from six months, or six times a year, non-consecutive for seven days, and then I've seen once a month for seven, or seven days, or I think it was ten days the first one, and then seven days the other one, that you could do that. This would be, a temporary sign would not require a permit, whereas a temporary sign would require a permit, and a sign requires a permit. So we also have to think about enforcing.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, you said it fast. Say it again.
A sign would, as we have it right now, a sign would require a permit.
Permit, correct.
A temporary sign would require a permit. A special event sign would not require a permit.
And it would be outside the business district?
Yes.
Downtown business.
Yep.
And that's what we're trying to figure out, how many of those?
Yeah, I mean, you know, how many feather signs can you have? And let's, I'm trying to think of some examples, but, you know, I will, not mentioning our car dealers, but other car dealerships I've seen that they have feather, and they change it out, you know, zero plus financing, and then the next month it's, you know, free pair of chrome wheels. I don't know what it is, but they switch them out, and the same thing goes for some of your other businesses. So you don't want to make it so that it's not, the point is they're advertising, right? And as a consumer, you want to know, but then, so, but those are kind of the.
So what was the least restrictive option that you saw when you did your research?
Every month, you could just have one, and actually, the least restrictive would be there was no, you just, those are special event signs, and they're, you know, they're not allowed in this place, but they're allowed at your own discretion.
Honorable Mayor and Council, if we don't want to put a, kind of a timeframe on it, on a special events sign, we can require a permit, so at least there's some sort of tracking mechanism.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
I know you said we didn't need to decide tonight, but I would like to have some kind of, give you some kind of guidance, because I don't want another work session on this topic, if we can avoid it.
And would this go back?
You're on this journey with me, come on.
We've gone past town.
It's a complicated thing, and we want to get it done right, so I think we need to do.
So, yeah.
Is this committee still meeting?
No, no, they've done their part and kind of given their, now, I have consulted, I mean, I've asked.
Are you making these decisions on your own?
No, 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 no. Everything is based on what came out of that meeting, and then I'm, you know.
You're resonating with that.
And we had a lot of things that, so we're adding these things, you know, you start adding these definitions because we didn't have them, then you're, it starts becoming more and more complicated, because then other sections apply.
I just want to make sure we get it done.
Right, the right way.
The right way, get it done properly.
The other thing that we're looking into is the lighting. We talked about that, you know, how to measure that.
What did we say for lighted signs? I just noticed one time I was downtown, we had a lot of people that have several businesses that have.
We decided that we don't want them too bright, but brightness is, you can't.
There's a lot of them that have signs that say, that are signs that, I don't know if they flash or not, but they say open.
Yeah.
And we have several businesses downtown that have those.
Yeah, we were opposed to flashing signs, that go from completely, that change from being completely off to on, that are flashing. An open sign, though, I mean, that's pretty standard.
And I think we said that we were fine with that as long as it was turned off when the business was closed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're talking about the electronic, the newer LED, or the signs that you're seeing more and more, the bright, they have the images going on them. So we've, I figured out those are luminance, nits is how you measure those, which is basically candleless per square meter, so there's tools to measure that, too. So it's, commercial lighting has a whole different, is a whole different ballgame than your bulbs, right, how much light gives off, so. Scott's going to be looking a little bit into that and see what the standard is. Now, I've looked online, I've looked at other communities, and they say, okay, well, it can be five thousand nits during the daytime, don't quote me on these numbers, but X amount at night, or X amount at day, X amount at night, and then the majority of them say that there has to be some kind of automatic thing that adjusts over, so that it knows it's nighttime, okay, we bring it down, and so you're not getting that blinding light. And then, like I said, there's a way to measure that.
So it says here in your recommendation that it must have an ambient light meter, an automatic or manual dimmer control.
Yep, yep.
So it doesn't mean that somebody has to go around measuring the lights?
No, but if we had a complaint, we would need to be able to say, okay, our thing says you can only have five thousand nits at, during the daytime, and you're at eight thousand, or vice versa at night, whatever, and we can measure that, and then we can enforce that. The, when you do, and I've reached out to a couple of signs, I'm trying to get some, like what is exactly right for this, are the numbers? And there was a couple that repeated at those, the numbers that I have in there, which I think is like five thousand and then some other amount for the nighttime, so. But I, before we make that, we want to make a hundred percent sure that that's correct, because we want to be fair about it. We don't want something that's super prohibitive, or something that's, you know.
Not strong.
Yeah, you can have it as. Yeah, you can have it as bright as the sun, because you said you can have X amount of light, so. We did, I changed everything, the, the timeframes, I did put in something about the signs that are beat up. If there's a storm, then it's sixty days versus thirty. You have an additional time. And we thought about that, is that there's going to be lots of other people that need to get signs, and so giving a little extra time on that. Talked about special events. Portable signs. Updated, I've updated where things, you know, where, what signs can be there and not. That's really the main things right now are the illumination for the LED signs, and this temporary sign, you know, but if, if that's something where we get a permit, as we discussed, that, that would probably work, so.
Did you ever think you'd get this knowledgeable on signs?
I feel like I'm know way too much about signs.
Do you see those flashing signs?
I do see flashing signs. And the funny thing is, I'll go out and say, oh, okay, we've decided this is what we're going to do, and then I walk out and I see a sign that's already, you know, and it's been there, so. You know, it's getting it so that it's, it's good for the businesses, but it's good for the citizen, you know, balancing it out. And, but we got to make sure we do it right, and, and eventually, it's going to be reviewed by an attorney, I would imagine, before we put it into, yes, it will be reviewed.
I certainly appreciate the time you put into this.
Yeah, and I appreciate council's time, and. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, next, that is a work session for the citywide cleanup. Ms. Wolman.
Good evening, everyone. After the citywide cleanup we had, where we went out to the recycle center for a week, we had listened to your concerns regarding how we could provide better service for the citizens who work during the day, or nights, or whatever it is. So, we came up with an idea, as possibly with your guidance and help, that we could allot tickets available, and where they could go up, take their unwanted items out to the recycle center, November to May, which gives them a pretty good timeframe. They would have to, though, abide by the recycle center's working hours, and they are not open on Saturday. She does not see that as a foreseeable thing to happen on Saturdays. But they are open seven to four-thirty Monday through Friday. They're willing and able to work with us on this, and we would sell the tickets for fifteen dollars per load, and as the load would be either a carload or a pickup load. One question I did have is, did you want to make three hundred and fifty tickets available during that timeframe? And would you like it to be one ticket per household, or first come, first served? Is to consider. Also, we would stick with the no commercial businesses, anything for profit, no. They would have to follow the procedures of the recycle center, where they would have to pull on the scale, go into the office, turn in their ticket. Recycle Center would turn around and bill us for their, what was dropped off. We would have the same restrictions as we've had in the past, no construction, no yard waste, things like that. This would be better, I feel, and we feel, this would be better for the citizens, that they would have more time and opportunity to get to the recycle center during November to May. We would save a lot of money on, we wouldn't have any staff time, because we wouldn't be out there. We wouldn't be renting dumpsters. So I would think that this would be, I mean, the staff time alone would save a great deal of money, and the recycle center is always there.
Then November to May seems pretty awkward. I mean, there's not a lot of people cleaning out their garages in November, December, and January. So, is there a reason that we did November instead of February through October?
We can change it, it was just.
It's not snowing? Must we know that it's not going to snow?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that there are people who move, or who have to empty houses for different reasons at different times of the year, so. Seems reasonable.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we just wanted to make sure that it was a broader timeframe. So, I mean, you know, we have three, allotted three hundred and fifty tickets for this particular year. We ended in May just because that we needed to have all those tickets and all the bills paid for before they ended the fiscal year. And so, November to May just gave property owners, residents, a little bit more time. Maybe in there, and then it would.
All within the same fiscal year.
Right, and then there's, there's holidays in there, if you maybe had some holiday time, vacation time. Just wanted to make sure that there's enough time for, for residents to go to the recycle center.
And I do agree that it's to the benefit of the residents, so I, I like the idea. I did, I'm glad you mentioned wondering if it's per household, because that was one of the questions I had, is what's your recommendation, is it per household?
Honorable Mayor and Council, we did not do a regulation on per household the last time we did that, so we did have multiple households coming and purchasing, purchasing a ticket. So we certainly can do whatever council desires.
In my, if you did, I would at least max it at two per household.
I was just going to say, could we just do like two per household or something?
Otherwise, you may have somebody going every time they need to take junk out, they get one, and then somebody that needs one, by the time the spring gets here, whatever, and there's no, there's no more tickets left. The three hundred and fifty have been used up. So I think there, whether it's one or two, I think there probably should be a max.
Okay.
And I don't know how you.
It would be tracked through.
How you track, I mean, that was the other thought I had, was I had to track it.
There would be a spreadsheet, spreadsheet that the girls would use downstairs to track, see if that household's already picked one up. It'd be easy for them to look that up, yeah.
That would be the other thing, just tell them.
It's not additional work, they're already tracking that.
I don't think it, it would be additional work, obviously, but I don't think it was a problem last time, that when they would buy tickets last time, it was on a spreadsheet.
So we should like that information.
Okay.
That would be, you know, maybe two, that way if you clean in the fall, you got a chance of be cleaning it in the spring, you'd have a.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, you do.
And we're not going to have any snow.
You're jinxing it, right?
Yeah, I know, I just jinxed it, sorry, Brandon.
Any other questions that council has to give, give Kim any more direction?
Just appropriately, you want to.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
I think it is a good idea.
Go open the door.
Yeah, I think that our staff has been great in doing it in the past, although I think they're, all of you are already carrying tremendous loads, and so if there's a better way for us to do this and more efficient, I think it's good.
Safer.
Does he write the program up? Safer, yes. Okay.
And I like that it saves money.
Okay, Honorable Mayor and Council have the formal approval at the next council meeting, which will be October sixth, to approve the plan that we discussed tonight.
Kim, you have anything else, council, that you'd like to?
Yes, actually, I have something. It's come to my attention, I visited a vape shop this week, and I'm a little concerned about some of the items that are sold in them. I have talked to local police, have talked to the sheriff's department, and I've talked to our representatives at the state, Representative Jones and Senator Evans. I am concerned about food-grade nitrous oxide being sold in our vape store. And I'd like a report about if that's something that should be sold, if it, if, I've, I've heard different things, whether it is illegal or is not illegal. I was counseled inside a store, in, in, in Storm Lake, on what to buy for huffing, and it bothers me. It, it frightens me, so I'd like to learn more about that. And I believe there is ways, there are ways to make this not available in our community.
The whole, the whole industry? Is that what you're saying?
That would be bad.
Well, it's nitrous oxide.
Specifically nitrous oxide, which is a huffing, an agent that is used for huffing.
I mean.
Or making whipped cream, but I, the amount of whipped cream that you'd be making with cylinders this big, I can't imagine who's anybody making that much whipped cream.
And the fact that you can go in and not know anything about it, and get educated on what to buy and how to use it, is also disturbing to me.
Very disturbing. Sorry.
There is a state statute, but there, it might not be strict enough, so I think.
There's loopholes, apparently.
There's loopholes.
And there are representatives looking into it to see whether or not those loopholes are getting, you know, people going around.
Abused.
Abused, right. Thank you.
Anything else? Do you have anything?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I do not.
I don't really know exactly how we're going to adjourn tonight.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we do have to adjourn the city council meeting. City Clerk Martinez has to shut the Zoom off, and then we have to redo this again, yes. But it will be a brief drainage district meeting. It'll be a brief, we just have one item.
Drainage district meeting.
Brief drainage. Well. Hold on to the next.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Rickliff.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson McKeon. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.